Hoffman.
Here.
Lars.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Brooks.
And here.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. Item number four, discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting January 21st, 2025. We will strike, there are no minutes for the meeting that you did not have a quorum, so that will be struck for item B. And then, item C, approval of claims in the amount of $511,329.51 and payroll expenses of $259,455.70. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
That's what I thought, and then you raised your hand.
How does it go?
I was going to add.
Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Dr. Lars, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman.
Yes.
Lars.
Yes.
Adair.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Item six, reports from staff. Planning commission meeting from January 27th, 2025.
So we had an issue come up, a lady's wanting to rezone her property from residential to commercial. The planning commission approved it through the city council. However, she has since withdrawn her request, so... That's kind of where that stands.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Are you on it?
Yeah, I was there. Part of the discussion, which I'm glad it came up, kind of renewed some questions about the direction that we're going as far as city planning and zoning. I know that in, as far back as 2020, we had really started to try and pick up some speed on that, but COVID hit, things get away from us. It's probably something that's worth the council, in the coming future, reexamine to see if we've got some ideas or some direction on how we want to see zoning and some things adjusted in city limits. And it's come up a time or two.
Yeah.
So I just was going to pass that along from the planning commission that we are open to restarting that if there's a will of the council.
I think, and Drew, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe with the previous direction, I don't think the council has taken any action to change any of that. And that I would think that the planning commission could proceed with bringing back the... I mean, everything you do is going to have to come back for council for approval, but I would say that the planning commission could proceed with picking up where it was left off back in, it was 2020, so...
Haven't been any changes since I started in '22 that I'm aware of, that I think of.
Any questions regarding the planning commission meeting? All right. Item B is the hospital authority meeting on January 28th. Mr. Bowman?
Mr. Mayor, I was out of town, could not attend that meeting, so I have nothing to report.
Okay. Item C is the library board meeting on February 10th. Mrs. Swallow?
They've had several things that they have replaced and fixed here lately. The stair treads have been replaced. There was a cracked window that's been replaced, but now we're having a problem with tile cracking, so they're going to look at some solutions for that. They're working on the 25-26 budget. Prentice has gotten Wi-Fi to all the computers so that the teens can now get back on their computers with specific controls again, but the rest of it was pretty routine.
Any questions from Mrs. Swallow? Thank you. Item D is the Alvarina Authority meeting on February 4th, 2025. I do not...
The minutes should be attached.
I thought that we were, didn't see them here, but I thought they were attached.
They're attached by the hospital.
Yeah. I do know that I've seen steel being erected and looking like a building out there, and they're making progress. Item E is the Alva Tourism Tax Commission meeting on January 15th. That meeting was canceled. Item F, Alva Board of Adjustments meeting, was not one. G, Alva Regional Airport Commission meeting on February 10th. We accepted, or we were given their coursing resignation, so we do have an open position at the airport for airport manager. We had also, I don't see, we'd had a previous meeting. Drew, with this just being reports, can I talk about a special meeting in the airport board? Capital claim?
Talks about just being the February 10th meeting, so might be able to address that in your mayor's report.
The February 10th meeting, we did have a discussion regarding the lease for airport grounds and requirements for fencing. If you run livestock, made some recommendations to the city manager to update that lease language and get it approved so that we can go out for bids on the grounds out there for the upcoming ag season, so... Other than that, did I leave anything out?
No.
All right. Any questions regarding the airport board meeting on February 10th? Item H is Parks and Recreation Commission meeting on February 12th. Mrs. Swallow?
It was routine business most of the way through. We did have a presentation on Musco, or lighting for the field. Musco also has the current lighting system, so there, it will, that's one of the things we're looking at, is redoing the lighting system. The pool, the gravel is down, and when we're able to do concrete, we'll be able to do the concrete when it gets warmer. The bath pass is going well, and we were denied the grant.
Item four. Any questions for Mrs. Swallow? All right. Item I, it was not a cemetery meeting, Finance Committee meeting on February 18th. Dr. Lars?
It was a pretty routine meeting. We have five new CDs coming up, or five CDs coming up for maturity in March, so Trent will be going out for bids on those over the next week or so. We also talked about how, or payment methods for the grader that's on the agenda, if it's approved tonight. And then Sadie's also looking into P cards for some of our departments to get some cash back on our purchases, so that was about all we really got.
Any questions regarding the Finance Committee meeting? Thank you. So I will add, from my report, airport had a special meeting to work with the engineer on long-range capital improvement plans. There's a unique opportunity right now with both still being some FAA funding as well as state funding for airport development, which we have the chance to really improve the infrastructure out there with just a 5% match. So 95% grant funding to make some really significant changes out there, just for airports, so it's something that we were talking about with the engineer. We did ask the engineer to start developing plans for roughly 100,000 square foot hangar, commercial hangar, that we would hopefully be able to rent out either with overnight stays or for even long-term business, possibly. And so they're going to design that, as well as another roughly 60 by 60 hangar that would be with the intent of having it completely climate-controlled and potentially, there is an interest, whether it's Survival Flight or a future medical helicopter company, it would meet their needs for housing their craft, as well as keeping their medications and everything, their equipment, all safe and that sort of thing. So those two projects, the engineer's going to go back and get the workforce on developing plans, so like I said, those will be 5% match. Gail wasn't incorrect in her remarks that the federal, or that the Oklahoma Tourism Recreation Department did tell us that we were disqualified from the Land and Water Conservation Fund grant for $500,000. However, since then, they've come back and asked us for more information, and so I think that possibly that funding is still, well, it's not a hard no yet. And so I think there've been, there was a lot of challenges that various agencies that control those purse strings had put in a place that maybe weren't the intention of our elected leadership when it comes to administering those funds. So we are back under consideration for those funds. Other than that, we did have filings for the municipal seats. I will report that Mr. Hoffman from Ward 1, Seat 1, will be remaining here in April. He is unopposed. We have Mr. Kenneth Ferris with us this evening, who is also unopposed for Troy's seat in Ward 3. And Treasurer Goss is also unopposed. And then we do have a three-person race. I see Sammy's here, and we got Mark here for, and I don't know Cannon, but Ken Cohen has filed for the vacant seat in Ward 2. And then Greg and Joey Melton are running for the Ward 4 seat. So we wish, you know, everybody, if you're in a, if you're in a race, I hope it's not mudslinging and all that kind of junk. I hope we have, you know, civil discourse as we go throughout our election process, but I wish everybody well. And for those of you that, you know, you're going to be here, congratulations and look forward to serving with you.
I said, "more condolences." I said, "more condolences."
More condolences. Don't get me started. I believe, other than that, I'll conclude my report and turn it over to the city business manager for his report.
I sent out my manager's report, started to get it attached to the agenda. I was missing some data that I needed, and I finally got ahold of that today, so I'll get that out. If there's any questions about that, feel free to shoot me an email, give me a call, whatever you need to do. We've been kind of busy with going a lot of places lately, between the city manager's winner conference to the Congress of Mayors, highly educational trip, which was a good time, got to learn a lot, so trying to get back in the swing of things. Also, you know, guys just staying busy, guys and gals, working, doing what they can for the city. The street department's really been working hard, trying to make sure that they're able to keep these streets clean during this bad weather, so I appreciate their efforts. Other than that, that's all I have.
Does anybody have any, council have any questions for Mr. Ford?
I do. On your report over the maintenance that we do ourselves, at the bottom of that, can you put, can you tally it?
Of course.
That's all we got.
Any questions from the council? All right. Next item is remarks and inquiries by citizens. We'll ask if you have a public comment, that you limit that to two minutes, and we'll have Mr. Ford keep the time. Just a reminder, this is not a council discussion. The council can't respond or discuss any of these items with you, but you are certainly welcome to make comment. And I would ask that, and if you do this, I'll, I've been scolded, so if you start to make your comments, I am going to ask that you stop and state your name so that we have that for the record. Well, if there's no public comment, we will move on to item eight, presentation from City Economics. The Alva by the Numbers report was emailed to us, and it's here at your spot when you got here today. Mr. Godwin, due to the weather, was not able to attend this evening. And also, the community planning meeting that was scheduled for tomorrow has also been postponed, and information will go out as soon as it has been rescheduled, so... Item nine is discussion and action to approve contract documents with Enterprise Fleet Services, authorize the mayor and/or business manager to sign all necessary documents. Steve, I'll let you take it.
Okay. Everybody's had the master, actually, what's it called? Master agreement, lease agreement. If anybody's kind of curious what we're looking at for the first few vehicles, try to blow this up where you can see it. It's just a replacement, three of our really bad maintenance nightmares, to get something that's safe, as well as two PD vehicles. One on, it's a little bit, it's just kind of a new engine. Then the other one is the PD vehicle that was totaled over the last bad serial scams. So it's been totaled. We're going to get some money back on that, like $11,000. So we're going to get back $11,000 to that, so it'll help cover the first year of this lease with Enterprise for that vehicle at least. So that'll be good news. So we got at least four replacements here for water and streets and those guys on this first go-around. And then I'll continue to work with Mr. Holland to set up priorities for the next go-around, for the next few vehicles, till we can kind of get all of them set in rotation.
Mr. Cunningham, you've reviewed these terms, and they are...
Yes, I think I talked to Steve about one thing I had caught today, that this was, I think it said governing law was Missouri, but he said they had sent over and updated one with being Oklahoma. So I think the copy I have here says Missouri, but the newest copy, the only change was that.
Yeah, Missouri, Oklahoma.
Yeah, there's an addition of the, of the terms to Oklahoma, which is what Joe were talking about. But we should have that one?
I think it was number 17.
I see it on 17. Do we? I think we need to make note of that when we make our motion.
Yeah, if we're going to approve it, that they would approve it with the change to Oklahoma.
Okay, and that's on item 17, successors and assigns governing law. I mean, we've had this on our agenda for a few meetings now. The instructions after the last council meeting were to negotiate contract terms and bring it back for approval, so with that, if there's not any further discussion, I would entertain a motion. Or if there are, is further discussion, let's have it.
I have a motion to approve the contract documents with Enterprise Fleet Services and authorize the mayor or city business manager to sign all necessary documents with the change from Missouri to Oklahoma in the contract.
Second. I have a motion from Dr. Lars, and a second from Mr. Hoffman, to approve contract documents with Enterprise Fleet Services and authorize the mayor or manager to sign all necessary documents with the change on item 17, that the governing law would be the state of Oklahoma. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Lars?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Ford and your staff, and thank you and all the folks at Enterprise for bringing this opportunity to us. I think it's going to be good for our city.
I thank you guys for your consideration and everything that you all done to this point. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, y'all. We'll talk tomorrow.
Sounds good, sir.
Item 10 is discussion and action to enter into executive session pursuant to 25OS 307B1 to discuss city of Alva EMS performance appraisals for the following full-time positions, EMS director, paramedic, and EMT advanced four positions.
Motion to enter into executive session as stated in the agenda.
Second. I have a motion from Dr. Lars, a second from Mr. Hoffman, to enter an executive session as stated on item 10 of the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Lars?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Okay. I'll ask the council members, our legal counsel, manager, clerk, and finance director to remain. We're going to return to regular session. We're going to return to regular session, and we are going to recess the city council meeting and call the board or the utility authority meeting. Please call roll.
Hoffman?
Here.
Lars?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bowman? Parsons?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Adair?
We have a quorum, the other two will be back and make it a bigger quorum, but we'll go ahead and get started. We're going to skip to item four, right?
Yeah.
Might as well do the consent agenda while they're... Discussion and action on consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 21st, 2025. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $132,318.76 and payroll expenses of $26,353.19. And clerk, please note that councilmen Bowman and Adair have joined us. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
All motions to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Parsons, a second by Mr. Hoffman, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Parsons?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Lars?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Item four is discussion and action to approve contract Myers Engineering for engineering design for the 2026 CWSRF sanitary sewer system improvements project and authorize the mayor and/or city business manager to sign all necessary documents. There's about, looks like, according to our notes here, over 11,000 linear feet of supermain and five lift stations that this engineering service would be for. The engineering would be contingent upon receiving the 2026 CWSRF, the CWS Clean Water State Revolving Fund, Clean Water State Revolving Fund award. And so if we did not get that award, we would not incur these expenses. But this would authorize Myers to do the design work for that. Steve, Bill, Drake, what would you like to share with the council?
Sure. Hey, can you hear me, Charlie?
Yeah, Bill, thanks for hanging out with us.
Oh, sure. Hey, I was just going to say, this program is similar to the program that we did two years ago on the water meters. I think we got close to a million dollars in fiscal forgiveness on those. Tomorrow, we'll go with it. This program, this first phase we're, we want to apply for this year, we'd pay for the design, if it gets funded, of these improvements, and then we would come back next year and apply for a million dollars to build part of the improvements. And then, over time, we would take the plans as they're approved, and we would basically apply for funding for pieces of the project as we go forward in time. So we could do CBPG projects, we could do REIT grants, and any other new funding that comes around past this next 2027 funding cycle. So that's what the thought was here, we've got to have a designing place to move, to be able to develop funding for the project as the funding sources come available.
Thank you, Bill.
Yes, sir.
Does the council have any questions regarding this item? All right. Drake or Steve, do you have anything to add?
The only thing I have to add is, we're going to have to have a special meeting on this early next week, because the second piece of this is getting with our, what do you call it, bond council?
Yeah.
To work on the financing to get the, this loan going, and, but it all has to be done before March, so we're going to have a special meeting Monday or Tuesday, and it's going to require at least six yes votes for us to be able to work with the bond council on this. So just know it's going to be next Monday or Tuesday, and we're going to really need to have all seven people here. But once again, like Bill said, it's, this is all free money. It's all loan forgiveness.
Even whenever we're with the bond count, that's mean...
It's going to be rolled up into this, too. All right. So, yeah.
Any other questions or discussion from the council? I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Myers Engineering for engineering design services for the 2026 CWSRF sanitary sewer system improvement project and authorize the mayor and/or city manager to sign all necessary documents.
All second.
I have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mr. Parsons, to approve the contract with Myers Engineering as stated in item number four. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Lars?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
All right.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Hey, thank you, guys. All right, be safe. Have a good evening.
Right. Item six is new business. We don't have anything that would qualify as new business. And item seven is adjourned, utility authority is adjourned. Now we'll return to item 11 on, we'll call back to order the city council meeting and go to item 11. Discussion and action to approve the contract with Survival Flight for ground EMS services and authorize the mayor and/or city business manager to sign all necessary documents.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we table item 11.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Adair, and a second from Mr. Parsons, to table item 11. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Adair?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Lars?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Item 12 is discussion and action, authorize the city manager and the mayor to sign the engagement letter with HSPG and Associates to allow them to conduct the city's FY 23-24 annual audit. This is a standard document that has to be authorized each year to get our audit reformed. HSPG is, has been our auditor for two full fiscal years, this would be the third, I believe. This would be the third, I believe.
I have motion to authorize the city business manager and the mayor to sign the engagement letter with HSPG and Associates to allow them to conduct the city's FY twenty-three, twenty-four annual audit.
Second.
Have a motion by Dr. Lahr, a second by Mr. Hoffman, to authorize the city business manager and the mayor to sign an engagement letter with HSPG and Associates as stated in item twelve. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Lahr?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Item thirteen is discussion in action to approve resolution twenty-two five dash zero zero two, resolution of the City of Alva, Oklahoma, approving the interlocal cooperative agreement for circuit engineering district, CED, for January first through December thirty-first, 2025. This is also routine business in order to utilize the CED services, and a lot of it is signs and stuff like that. We have the interlocal cooperative agreement that we approve annually. Does not bind us to use them, but it makes it available to us if it's favorable to us. Entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two five dash zero zero two, a resolution, City of Alva, Oklahoma, approving the interlocal cooperative agreement for circuit engineering district, CEDS, January first through December thirty-first, 2025.
I'll second that.
Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mr. Adair, to approve resolution twenty-two five dash zero zero two as stated in item thirteen. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Item fourteen is discussion in action to approve resolution twenty-two five dash zero zero three, resolution of the City of Alva, Oklahoma, entering into agreement with the Board of County Commissioners for Woods County, Oklahoma, concerning the part-time employment of Woods County sheriff's deputies as City of Alva law enforcement officers. This would be, we have presently two officers that would, would work for both law enforcement agencies, and this allows that to happen. Has, Woods County already approved their resolution?
Yeah, it's attached here.
All right. Any questions or discussion? We approved this last year as well.
Well, last year we approved something similar for Cummings to be the interim sheriff.
Okay.
But this, this one includes both the Cummings and the McCullough, the toilet for both company, or both the agencies.
Okay. Are there any questions or discussion? I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve resolution number twenty-two five dash zero zero three as stated in the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Dr. Lahr, a second by Mr. Hoffman, to approve resolution twenty-two five dash zero zero three as stated in item fourteen of the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Lahr?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Item fifteen is discussion in action to approve City of Alva resolution twenty-two five dash zero zero one, an ordinance amending the City of Alva Code of Ordinances, Chapter forty-four, Article five, Solid Waste, Section forty-four dash two-six-one. I, I would like to table this. I think it's an ordinance that we need to address. I think that I'd like to, if council would allow it, and you guys can vote to approve it if you'd like, but I think there's some language that we need to clean up a little bit.
I'll, motion to table ordinance, table amending the ordinance of the City of Alva Code of Ordinances, Chapter four, Article, the Solid Waste, Section forty-four dash two-six-one.
Have a motion from Mr. Parsons, a second from Dr. Lahr, to table item fifteen. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Parsons?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Item sixteen, discussion in action to approve City of Alva resolution twenty-two five dash zero zero two, an ordinance amending the City of Alva Code of Ordinances, Chapter forty-four, Article two, rates, charges, billing, procedure, Section forty-four dash twenty-one. I didn't look at it after we spoke.
This is the appeals process, or if you had an appeal against your...
Okay. So we, we did, we did have a, a three-person council committee put together just to look at this the other night. Unless anybody liked to speak on it, this gives us an appeals process that allows people to dispute their utility bills. If there's no discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve City of Alva resolution twenty-two five dash zero zero two as stated in item sixteen of the agenda.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Dr. Lahr, a second by Mr. Parsons, to approve City of Alva resolution twenty-two five dash zero zero two as stated in item sixteen. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Lahr?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Item seventeen, discussion in action to approve City of Alva resolution twenty-two five dash zero zero three, an ordinance amending the employee retirement system defined contribution plan for the City of Alva. This was oversight and language, wasn't it?
Yeah.
We didn't get it in all parts of the ordinance that needed to be...
Yeah, we fixed that last time. We didn't do, we needed to catch this last piece, and we didn't get it in there, so.
So this is an ordinance, not a resolution, right?
It is an ordinance, yes.
Okay.
So let's...
If someone approves this, you would just say, City of Alva, ordinance twenty-two five.
Is that the proper number for an ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
I probably didn't do it.
Because it's in the same sequence as the resolutions.
In the attachment.
I've got it, I've got it written on my clipboard. I'll keep them separate.
Any discussion or questions by the council? If not, I would entertain a motion. Keep in mind the advice of our legal counsel.
I'll motion to approve City of Alva ordinance twenty-two five dash zero zero three as stated in item seventeen of the agenda.
Have a motion by Dr. Lahr, a second by Mr. Hoffman, to approve City of Alva ordinance twenty-two five dash zero zero three, an ordinance amending the employee retirement system defined contribution plan for the City of Alva, Oklahoma. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Lahr?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Item eighteen is discussion in action to approve the appointment of Mr. John Wiebner to the Alva Regional Airport Commission. Mr. Terry Klein resigned his position on the airport board. Mr. Wiebner has expressed interest, and, and he maintains qualifications that are consistent in aviation, and he is my recommendation to approve appointment to the airport commission.
I will tell you, I have conversations with Mr. Wiebner monthly, honestly, probably weekly, about something to do with the airport, and I can't think of a more qualified person to serve on that board, so I will motion to approve the appointment of Mr. John Wiebner to the Alva Regional Airport Commission.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Parsons, a second by Mr. Bowman, to appoint John Wiebner to the Alva Regional Airport Commission. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Item twenty is discussion in action to authorize purchase of a used, twenty-seventeen John Deere road grader.
No.
Is that this one? Ah, leave it, there's a lot of them. Oh.
That was not intentional. I swear. Discussion in action to approve proposed changes to
the twenty-two four dash twenty-two five City of Alva Employee Pay Plan, adding an Assistant EMS Director. Is there any discussion or questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, to approve proposed changes to twenty-two four, twenty-two five City of Alva Employees Pay Plan, adding an Assistant EMS Director.
I'll second it.
Have a motion by Mr. Bowman, a second by Mr. Adair, to approve...
Brooks.
Oh, it was Brooks? Oh, I'm sorry. Motion by Mr. Bowman, a second by Mr. Brooks, to approve proposed changes to the twenty-two four, twenty-five City of Alva Employee Pay Plan, adding an Assistant EMS Director. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Now, item twenty is discussion in action authorize purchase of a used twenty-seventeen John Deere road grader for a total price of one hundred eighteen thousand, twelve dollars, with annual lease purchase payments of twenty-six thousand, eight hundred thirty-one dollars and forty cents. So we're, we're still good to discuss this and, and do this. We, and Drew, I think it would be okay if we wanted to open up the purchasing options to include outright payment if, if the council deemed that appropriate.
Right.
What, rather than, as we met with finance committee this eve, this evening, well, number one, why do we need the equipment? So a couple months ago, you guys understand that the road grader went down needing repairs. We had a special meeting at that time and asked the manager and staff to go find out what the repairs were going to cost. In the meantime, the street department has been leasing a road grader, and it's been in use with, you know, winter weather cleanup, among other things, throughout the city. And, and so the grader here in the, in the item twenty is the, is the piece of equipment that we've been leasing. It is, and it's been like a month-to-month lease. It hasn't been a long-term lease or anything like that. But the cost to repair our grader was going to be a hundred and eight thousand dollars. This grader that we've been using, our cost after trade-in and applying the already made lease payments, being reduced from the purchase price, our outlay at this time would be a hundred and eighteen thousand, twelve dollars. If we were to lease purchase it, the, I believe the agreement is in the packet, Drew has reviewed it, the language is good to satisfy all of our statutory, statutory requirements. However, we also have the option to purchase it outright with the funds available in the Street and Alley Fund. If we purchase it outright, that would reduce the balance in that account, which presently is about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, so it would reduce that down to about one sixty-two. And that would be, you know, by doing so, that limits our purchasing ability for oil, asphalt, chips, other materials for street repairs. But with that said, the, the option is there. We will, that is a fund that continues to receive revenue every month, so we, we, it would not, it is not believed to have a detrimental impact on our budget for this year for being able to purchase street materials. I'm under the impression, talking to staff, that we should still have, we have been purchasing materials already this year, getting ready for street season, and it would still be, you know, gaining money, and we still have a balance in that account even if we do purchase it outright. So the, the question for council, the two, two questions. One, do we purchase the grader? Two, do we lease it, or do we buy it outright? Fair?
What's the finance committee recommend on that?
We said buy it outright.
And we discussed buying it outright since we have the cash to save the interest. Yeah, I agree.
So make sure and state your motion accordingly.
Is the total price going to be any different than the...
Any other questions? Discussion, I'd entertain a motion otherwise?
I'll make a motion to purchase a used twenty-seventeen John Deere road grader for the total price of a hundred and eighteen thousand, twelve dollars. Leaves it a little open, but I mean, it does say for that total price, so. Leaves it kind of open. If we vote it down, how do you...
Purchase outright.
Do I need to? You might, just, just for clarification, say you could let that die for... We already got, we already got a second, though, so we got to vote now.
We got it. We do have a second, so.
Yeah, so we will have to vote on it.
Call the vote, please. Remember, we're going to clarify this one, so the proper thing to do would be to vote no.
Okay. Parsons? Hoffman?
No.
Lahr?
No.
Swallow?
No.
Adair?
No.
Brooks?
No.
Bowman?
No.
Hang it, Joe.
Probably take a shot out.
Sorry, we want to take another stab at it.
No, I'm done.
I'd motion authorize the purchase of a used twenty-seventeen John Deere road grader for a total price of one hundred eighteen thousand, twelve dollars outright.
I'll second it.
All right. Let's buy a grader. We've got a motion from Dr. Lahr, a second from Mrs. Swallow, to purchase the twenty-seventeen John Deere road grader for a total price of one hundred eighteen thousand, twelve dollars, purchasing it outright. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Lahr?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Discussion, or twenty-one, discussion in action to enter into executive session pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh... Pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven B one to discuss FY twenty-five, twenty-six City of Alva and IFF Local thirty-seven, eighty-two negotiations. Our manager has informed me that this is an item that can be tabled without anything pressing needing to be determined this evening.
And we thank you for that.
I'll motion to table it.
I have a motion from Mr. Brooks and a second from Mr. Parsons to table item twenty-one. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Brooks?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
We don't have anything that qualifies as new business. Item twenty-three, remarks and inquiries by council members. I didn't mention it in my report, but I do want to express my appreciation to Mr. Bowman, Mr. Parsons, and Mr. Ford for their participation in the, this year's Congress of Mayors. I always seem to get a lot out of that. I hope you guys did as well. It's a great way to network with other leaders across the state, but also learn a little bit about how the legislative process at Oklahoma City impacts us here in Alva. So thank you guys for participating in that.
I would just like to thank all the citizens that came out tonight. I know it's kind of been a long meeting, and you guys had to wait a while, but we appreciate you coming out and being involved.
And the other, all right, we're adjourned, and we will open up the Alva Economic Development Authority meeting. Hey, Bridget, can we not run off real quick? We're going to wrap this up pretty quick. Sorry. We'll call the order of the Economic Development Authority meeting. Please call the roll.
Hoffman?
Here.
Lahr?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Adair?
Here.
Item 3 is discussion in action on the consent agenda on the following items of concern. Reports and items of a routine nature normally approved as age and year meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of regular meeting, January 24, 2025. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $20,787.54, and payroll expenses of $798,090. Whoa. Is that a typo?
What?
$798,000 in payroll?
No, it is a typo. It's backwards.
Claims. Yes, nearly $800,000.
Okay, so...
So we just need to say in reverse?
So, we will, we'll, we'll remove those and actually, we'll just go to the minutes, approve the minutes, and then we'll approve the claims. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll motion to...
I have a question. Hold on one second. Does Kelly plan? Mr. Mayor, as a trustee for the Alva Economic Development Authority, I request that we remove item B from the consent agenda and consider it individually.
Granted. Is there a motion to approve item A?
I will motion to approve item A. Chuck?
Parsons. Have a motion from Mr. Parsons, a second from Mr. Bowman to approve the minutes of January 21st, 2025. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Brooks?